Right there, right there. Call the meeting to order. Say, call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order.
No, here they call the row.
Call the row.
You did better than Ricky a job.
That's Mackenzie Dawson. She's there work, she's the Girl Scout troop that are working on the government badge. So she gavelled the meeting or called the row.
Bolt.
Here.
Gillum.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Rutherford.
Here.
Seaborn.
Here.
Salter.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. Would you please stand and join me in invocation?
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you this evening with thankfulness for all that you've bestowed upon us. Lord, we pray for your continued blessings upon our city and this commission. May the work that's done here tonight be pleasing unto you and we pray that you would be with us as we leave, keep us from harm. We'll give you the praise and the glory. Amen.
And flag salute, attention, position, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Are there any items that any of the commissioners would like to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Rutherford. Call the question. Motion carries seven I. Item two, presentation of the animal control pet of the week. I saw the pet out there.
That's what you need out on the range there.
There you go.
Yeah, have some competition.
I'm Officer Calfman, we're up there. This here is Blue. She's an adult female, blue heenet. Don't know a whole lot about her, we've only had her about a week. She was over at Expo Dumped and chasing horses. Much work to do, yeah. But that's all we know, it cost someone forty dollars to adopt her. She is up for adoption already.
Has she been spayed or not?
Not that we know of. She kinda has the barrel body look, so she might already be spayed. If he was looking for a good dog, I think she'd make someone a nice one, so.
Thank you very much. Item three, citizens' participation. This is that point in the program at which if you have something to talk to us about, come to the podium, introduce yourself, sign in, and you have three minutes per person and a twelve minute per subject limitation. So if you'd like to speak to us, approach the microphone. Your pen don't write just real well. My factory don't write at all now.
I'm Buck Day. Many of you know who I am. I'm city manager at McLeod. And we take care of the, we take care of the West Watkins Lake, as many of you know. And I just wanted you to know that we're doing a great job out there at the lake. We maintain it on a daily basis. And the, you know, if any of you, welcome, you know, invite you guys to come out anytime, holler at me anytime, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, that's what I work. So, and I'm at McLeod and if you're becking calls, so. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. I know you can't answer a whole lot of questions up here, so. But I just wanted you to know that we enjoy taking care of the lake for you. And even though it's, the lake belongs to PCDA, you guys pay a lot of hits, so. I just wanted you to know that we're glad to take care of it.
Thank you.
And I've given most of them a card, Mark, you're the only one I didn't give a card to. And I'll get you a card too, so. But, and I would be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you, Buck.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Cory Perez and I'm with Blue Zones Project. Let me sign in real quick. Yes, it's, nope, can't borrow that one. Thank you. This happened the last time. This happens and then it's hard to go after a dog.
We're on a budget.
Yeah, so I just wanted to share about two events we went to over this past weekend. I know when we think about Blue Zones Project, it's, sometimes we think about it as not necessarily something local, but we actually did attend two local events this past weekend. And I felt like we had a really great presence there. So Arts Trek was one of them at Maybigger Museum. And I actually got to attend their plaque we gave them today for being a supporting organization on Donna Merck's last day, and she had ten years with Maybigger Museum, so that was super exciting. Whenever we were at Arts Trek, I got to make, I think I saw Ed Bolt there, we, I got to make popsicle stick harmonicas for all of the kids. So it's always nice to have a project for the kids that doesn't involve a lot of candy and sugar. And so we're definitely gonna pop that in the back of our heads for future. The other one, and also at Arts Trek Museum, there were 2,000 people that engaged in the Arts Trek, even though, I don't know if you guys remember, the weather was horrendous on Saturday and we had a really great turnout. There were also 25-plus vendors that attended. Also, the Red Bud Fest, there were 500 to 600 people there, 20-plus vendors. And I believe there were 400 pizza boxes that were given, so we just wanted to share that we also participated and gave some volunteers out for local events, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rachel Milo, and today I'm speaking on behalf of Whistle as a business owner. And two things, one, I wanted to say I know that I see on the agenda the lowering of the speed limit on Kickapoo. And as someone who owns a business on Kickapoo, we have firsthand witnessed a T-boning in which somebody was killed. We have witnessed multiple crashes in front of our road, and I know that we're not lowering the speed limit right there, but we are lowering it a little further north. And I would just say, as a human, lowering speed limits is really a great thing for our city as a whole. And as a business owner, the faster they drive, the faster they pass our businesses. So the slower you can get them to drive, the more chance I have of actually getting them to see my display window, and so I appreciate that. And so that's kind of my opinion for you on that topic tonight. The second thing that I just wanted to bring up while I was here is the Homeland Celebration that Blue Zones Project did last week. For those of you who may not know, both Homeland Stores here in our community went through the Blue Zones Project approval process. And as part of that process, one of the things they decided to do was to stop selling all tobacco products in their stores. And what we learned from the president who came to visit us from their regional office was that that was not a leadership decision, that was not a president's decision, that was not a CEO's decision. Because Homeland is employee-owned, every single employee had to make the decision to take lesser of a paycheck if they stopped selling tobacco. And they, as an entity, in both locations, made that choice. And so I think that's a really strong stand that Homeland has made for us here in our community to say, it matters that much to eliminate tobacco from their stores, to every single person, from the cashier to the stalker, to the executive, to take a pay cut for the revenue they would not bring in to stop selling tobacco. And so for that, I just wanted to encourage all of you to shop with Homeland and to support their leadership. And also, thanks to the new staff for covering all of that with great coverage, because we had a really great presence from their regional and national headquarters. People are watching Shawnee because of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Anyone else? Okay. Item four, Lauren. Lauren Holmes is gonna introduce her Girl Scout troop 314. They're in pursuit of their government badge. We've already met Mackenzie.
Hello. We are troop 314. We kind of make up a little bit of everywhere in Pot County. We're in Bethel, Shawnee, Summendale. And we're working on our government badge. We have mostly juniors, we also have a cadet who's middle school age, and we have a brownie who's like lower elementary age. And so we just wanna say thank you for letting us come and observe what you guys do here for Shawnee.
Thank you for being interested.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Sure, we, I'm letting the girls speak up and say their own names.
Okay.
Want to say her name? Speak up.
My name is Jocelyn and I, I'm in fourth grade. And I'm, I, I go to Will Rogers Elementary.
Okay, good.
My name is Callie Elia. I'm fifth. My name is Callie Elia. I'm in the fifth grade and I go to Bethel Public Schools.
My name is Gracie Holmes. I'm in the fifth grade and I go to Bethel Schools.
My name is Kylie Gorden and I go to Bethel Schools.
My name is Claudia Thomason. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Sequoia.
My name is Destiny Sorenge and I'm in seventh grade and I go to Bethel.
My name is Zaperk Gendal and I go to Bethel Public Schools.
My name is Mackenzie Dawson and I'm in fifth grade and I go to Bethel.
Congratulations, all of you. Glad to have you. Y'all turn around, somebody wants to take a picture from the back. Thank you. to lower speed limit from 35 miles per hour on Kickapoo Avenue from MacArthur Street to West Tech Road, to 35 miles an hour on Kickapoo Avenue from MacArthur Street to West Tech Road.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This evening I have kind of a two-part presentation for y'all. The first part is speaking about where our traffic department has been focused and what we've been working on, so that y'all know where we're going, what we've been doing, where we're going. Second part will be addressing the item at hand tonight. So, first thing I wanted to show y'all and talk about was this traffic management system. We've been working over the last couple of years to put this in place. What this software does is allows us to connect to all of our traffic signals and to be able to control them and see what they're doing, how they're operating from a remote location such as my office. So that when we get calls or questions about a signal, we can just remote in, see what's going on with it, see if it's behaving correctly. Or if it isn't, we can make adjustments from the office. Now, another thing it does is if it happens to go out in a thunderstorm or something of that nature and go into red flash, it automatically alerts us via text message and email. It sends our texts, an email, it sends me an email, and then they have to acknowledge it, so I know when it went out, when they acknowledged it, and when they get back on site, it tells me, hey, I'm back online, so that we can work more efficiently in that. Now, I need, this screen, which is really hard to tell what's going on there, but there's little dots at each location on there that we have a signal. And if something's happened to be going on with it, that dot will change colors for me. And if it's up on my screen, I can see it change colors throughout the day and then I can start looking into it without ever getting a call from a citizen. I know something's going on with that signal. So, if we wanna look into a signal closer, I can pull up more detailed information about it. So, that picture on the left there, which is very tiny, but it gives me all kinds of information such as which signal direction is green, yellow, red, how much time they have, so I can see if the timing's acting correctly or not and/or adjusted, if need be. The pictures on the right, at certain intersections throughout town, some of the newer intersections, we actually have video cameras that are actually motion sensor cameras that I can see the traffic and watch it live, so that I can see how it's backing up and see if the motion is being detected correctly. If we get a call that a signal is not picking up a car, they set there too long, such as that, I can pull up the cameras, I can watch them and see how it's detecting cars. And we've had some that aren't adjusted right, don't like white cars, and we have to set the sensitivity different, some stuff like that. But we can see that happen live from our computers. Now, some cameras are a little bit different than others. Some of the newer cameras are better quality and detect different objects. The newest ones will even pick up bicyclists, so that they get triggered at the signals. So, this next slide, I'll set it up. I recorded a little bit of video so that y'all can see actually the cars. It's gonna be at the Garrett's, Garrett's Lake in 18. Yay, the video worked. So, what you'll notice, if you watch the lower right-hand, that's gonna be the westbound traffic. At this particular intersection, that is where the school lets out in the evening. And I believe I took this video about 3:20 in the afternoon. So you'll see cars starting to pile up there because they're letting out of school at that time, you know, during the pickup process. Well, with the Centrac system, what I've done is watched this intersection and adjusted the timing so that people aren't getting backed up, 'cause you'll see it, right now it's getting backed up as far as the eye can see. So the Centrac system changes the timing at a set time during the day to allow that westbound traffic to clear more cars. And then after that set time, it changes back and gives the priority to north-south traffic on 18. But you'll see how many cars it lets go. Even, there's even a straggler right there that's not paying attention, but it's gonna give him enough time to go ahead and get through it without getting stopped. And that was a big, big thing out there. We noticed, you know, once so many people get backed up, there was a gap time, so I can even set the gap, so that it waits on slower vehicles. But it clears all those cars, soon as it sees no one, no one there, it'll go back red real quick and allow the north-south traffic to go. So, that's some of the things we've been working on and adjustments being made. So, I just wanted to show y'all that, so that y'all are aware that we are watching traffic. We do have more plans in place and items such as this is just kind of the start of items that we maybe bring before y'all as we look into traffic closer throughout the city. Now, onto the item at hand. The request is to lower the speed limit from MacArthur through north to West Tech. So, this map, which is also tiny, shows some of our major corridors that are already 35 mile an hour, so that y'all can get an idea that Kickapoo south from MacArthur is already 35 all the way down to Farrell. And then Harrison is also 35 from about MacArthur all the way to Farrell and then from Farrell over to 177. Now, an interesting thing about the Harrison corridor is that it's currently at 45 mile an hour, and it has recently been lowered to 45 by ODOT. ODOT had done their own study and lowered it just a couple of weeks ago. So, that, most people didn't even notice that, but it did get lowered to that 45 mile an hour. And they'll continually watch that as the development unfolds, and they may lower it again as the domino area increases to be built out. So, what, so the area that we're looking at primarily is from 45th Street north where all the development has occurred, and that's where my focus has been primarily with my study through that area. So, through that area, I pulled all the records of accidents along that corridor that just happened on Kickapoo, although I have some plotted for I-40 and show on 45th. Those aren't in the count, they just, that's where they fell, so I didn't count them. But I went back to about 2010, which is about eight years, and we had 265 accidents along that corridor. Most of those fit into two categories. They're either T-bones from people pulling out in front of cars, or they're rear-end accidents. I mean, that pretty much sums up the accidents at that location, from what I found. So, in that, in that corridor, we took speed readings and counts of vehicles in between 45th and I-40. And what we found was that the, this is a chart for average speed along that corridor. And we found the fastest speed to be about 4:00 AM at, I can't read that one now, I think it was about 38 mile an hour. And it continued to get slower as traffic increased, of course, until about the noon time, which it was about 19 and a half mile an hour through the noon hour. I mean, of course, it gets really congested there and we understand why. The traffic slows down. After the noon hour, you can see that it slowly increases over time and traffic picks back up as the congestion slows down. So, with that in mind, I broke it down into two speed categories so that we could see exactly what categories of speed we were dealing with. And that far bar to the left is a speed zone of zero to 20 mile an hour, and that was about 22 percent of the cars. 20 to 25 was 22 percent. 25 to 30 was 21 percent. And then 30 to 35 was 18 percent. And then above 35 made up the other 15 percent. So, that's a real important number to us, because a lot of times on the setting a speed limit zone, one of the good indicators as to whether or not you have the speed set correctly or not is what we call the 85 percentile. And that basically means that 85 percent of the people are gonna drive the road appropriately and 15 percent are probably always gonna speed, you know.
That 4:00 AM guy.
That 4:00 AM guy, yeah.
I got it.
Yeah. Yeah, if you look closely, there was a .1 percent that did 55 to 60 mile an hour through there, so there was that one guy.
Other question. Your presentation for the group?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
The problem that exists truly, it was laughable, the speed limit of 45, that would have been to 45th going north.
From 40, yes.
And I have a problem in reducing, quite honestly, this other stretch of one mile for the 40. Your speed ratings that you got were from an area that was not part of that one mile.
That's correct.
So actually, I find that traffic typically is traveling 45, 42 to 45 miles an hour in that, now, which is a little fast. But I think reducing it to 35 is not necessary now. And I don't think, I guess I'm a libertarian to some degree, really not, but that is, I don't like to take away from the public something that's not necessary. And in talking to Mason, I don't believe we had a particular increase in accidents there relative to the other stretch of Kickapoo, which is 35. Is that basically true?
I didn't study that area, but my feeling would be that that'd be correct, yeah. From MacArthur to 45th Street.
Yeah, I've traveled many times. It's very smooth, there's not problems traveling, I would, 11:30, 12:00, 1:00, 2:30, all those hours are within probably high-traffic hours. And I had no problems at all. It was smooth, it was very even, controlled, and seemed to be in a speed that was probably about right for that area. And I don't see that changing very much in the near future. Most of the places that are going there are very slow-traffic items. I would rather see, certainly from 45th on, was a joke, 45 mile an hour, first place you can't travel that speed there, second place if you could, you sure as hell shouldn't, right? But I don't see the change at the 35. I think it's a little bit extreme, that's just what I feel about it.
The change in 35 from 45th to MacArthur?
Pardon me?
From MacArthur to 45th is?
Yes, correct. I've seen no holdbacks, I've seen, you know, and sometimes it sort of self-regulates itself because left turners at certain times of day, people going home, stopping and you're back at traffic, that'll slow it down. But basically, it normally flows pretty freely and no difficulty, so I've seen at a much higher speed than what you're talking about already. So if we're gonna enforce something closer to 35, you're gonna be knocking probably eight to 10 miles off the speed that the public is traveling right now.
Yeah, you can look at this study as two parts, and the part that you're concerned with is the 40 mile an hour zone from MacArthur to 45th Street. And that was chosen to be lowered as anticipation of growth, so that we would lower it while we were lowering this section, because we were behind the curve on this northern section so much, we chose to include that first section.
I realize you were making part of that change to make continuity between the other, on the, on the south side of MacArthur, is to make it synonymous or even with that, but I don't think that's necessary at this point. There may be a time in the future to change that, but I would much rather see it remain in 40. Certainly, the 45 mile an hour, dropping it 10 miles an hour was a great idea to start with. Secondarily, it sort of regulates itself anyway, because of the loud traffic, you cannot drive faster, but certainly that's a dangerous area. It's gonna continue to be, by the way, as we go along. It's not gonna get better down there, we're gonna have to figure something out, I don't know why, but.
Right. And we have plans for that as well, moving forward.
Well, I don't know if anybody else agrees with me or not, but it's sort of the way I feel about it.
Any other questions, or mine?
Well, I kind of disagree with you, Commissioner. Most generally, if there's not traffic impeding northbound, soon as the cars pass Penny Street, they start speeding up because they wanna make the green light at 45th Street. And they're going 40, 45 miles an hour going through that intersection. So if there's, they are slowing down or slowed down south of 45th Street, that's gonna help tremendously.
You're talking about going south then?
Going, no, going northbound.
Going northbound?
Going northbound.
You mean you've been able to go through there without stopping? You say you sailed through it?
Well, you should see some of the cars. They sail through on red lights. And there's been several wrecks right at the intersection of 45th and Kickapoo because of that, 'cause people making right turns off of 45th to go north, and the cars coming northbound are going too fast to hit them.
So you're saying, basically, the drive down there necessarily is not dangerous, but you say people are anticipating the speed and already picking up ahead of time?
Yes, to make the red, make the green light.
Other comments? Are you through? I didn't mean to cut you off.
The only comment I have is, on Farrell, you have, on Farrell, you want to get off of 177, it's 45, and then top the hill there, it goes to 35, and those are controlled areas. There's not a lot of business there, but there's a lot of residents and things like that. So, from MacArthur on down to 45th, there's several strips opening up there, and there's a lot of them on the east side where it's gonna be developed, so I can understand the proactive party that are trying to reduce the speed and do that. I'm not out there a lot, but when I do go out there, I notice that, you know, people, I was out on Harrison today, and people were driving on Harrison there by Bronson, and everybody's driving 55, 60 miles an hour, so, and passing me, so, yeah, I know that people are gonna pick them up. I think it's probably a good idea to attack that problem before it gets any worse and before we do. before we do have a number of accidents there, so.
I know the average speed on Kickapoo, south of MacArthur, is generally much higher than 35. In fact, probably closer to 42 or 43 as well. We're not gonna enforce the law, I guess, but it's an unrealistic speed, actually. Whatever.
Other comments?
Is there a motion?
I move to approve, as presented by staff.
Moved by Commissioner Salter to approve, staff's recommendations are second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Sehorn. Call a question.
Didn't like it?
I hit the little thing, says no, and refused to take it.
We got that pre-programmed for the stuff we want to pass.
Let's just collect our polls in this, in our federal elections.
We got six ayes and one nay. Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located at 125 West 45th Street, from A-1 Rural Agricultural District to A-1 Rural Agricultural District with conditional use permit. Case number PO-119, applicant Troy Williams.
Thank you, girls.
Please.
Good evening, Commissioners. The, from between the time this commission voted to defer this item back to the planning commission, to the April 3, 2019, planning commission meeting when it was last heard, the applicant has submitted a variety of new information and documents in support of their application. They have submitted information on health and safety, several studies on the relationship between cell towers and real estate values, signal strength information regarding that in the city of Shawnee, example photos of monopine towers, which the applicant has offered to do, if so the commission wishes. And they also submitted a photo simulation of what the tower would look like from multiple vantage points. In addition, they have submitted a revised site plan, in order to comply with subsection 175, subsection 20 of the zoning code. They have changed the towers classification on the site plan, to say that is, to state that is a sectional, which reduces the setback requirements from 120 percent of the tower height to 80 percent of the tower height, as per our code. They have reduced the tower height from 140 feet to 120. They have reduced the fence height from 6 feet to 7 feet, in order to meet code. They have changed the positioning of the tower within the compound, from the center of the compound to the northwest corner of it. They have added, they have delineated a parking space on the site plan. So in light of these corrections, and the new information that they submitted, the planning commission has recommended for approval, the conditional use permit for a cell tower at 125 West 45th Street, upon the following conditions. Documentation submitted, indicating that this is a sectional tower, which the applicant has since submitted. No excess equipment or parts shall be stored within the site. There shall never be any commercial advertising or signage on the site. Upon a final inspection, the tower shall meet the minimum construction and structural load standards specified in the adopted building code. Upon installation of the tower, as-built plans are to be submitted to the city of Shawnee, to be kept on file. An annual inspection report on the tower, as to compliance with FAA and FCC regulations, shall be submitted. And written assurance is submitted, stating that the land upon which the off-street parking for the facility is located, will be controlled by the same entity that manages the tower, which the applicant has also since submitted documentation for.
Any questions, Joseph?
Joseph, is it possible to show those visual items that you just agreed?
Those items should be in the packets. I don't have a copy, a physical copy on hand, but I believe if anyone's using tablets, they do have, they should have them in the packet.
Problem is, the tablet won't load.
Oh.
Sure.
Thank you.
What was the feature that changed the planning commission's mind, basically?
Well, before, the planning commission was concerned about setbacks. The tower, as submitted last time, stated it was strictly a monopole, and monopole towers.
That's three-section pole we're talking about now.
Yep. It is now a three-section pole, which is now, which makes it a sectional. And that changes the setback requirements.
Changes the pole radius from one thing to?
120 percent to 80 percent.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we approve.
Moved by Commissioner Salter to approve, is there a second?
With all of the recommendations that staff said, conditions.
Second.
Second. Second by Commissioner Rutherford. Any further discussion? Call a question.
Mr. Mayor, I'll read the ordinance title under the record briefly, or as briefly as I can. An ordinance concerning the zoning classification of the following described property located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, to wit, beginning at the northeast corner of the northwest quarter, of the northwest quarter of Section 6, Township 10, north range 4, east of the Indian Meridian, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, which is the center of Beard Street, then south 1,320 feet to the center of 42nd Street, thence west to the center line of 42nd Street, a distance of 328.76 feet, to a point, thence north, a distance of 1,320 feet to the north line of said section, thence east, 328.76 feet to the point of beginning, formerly described as blocks 23 and 24 and 27, Armoredale, addition to the city of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma, from zoning classification A-1 Rural Agricultural District to A-1 Rural Agricultural District with conditional use permit, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Shawnee.
Could you repeat that, please?
Call a question.
Excuse me, this is a motion to approve with the seven conditions that were listed.
Yes.
There are one abstention, and one no, and five ayes. Motion carries. Item seven, acknowledge monthly sales tax and city treasurer report.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Our combined sales and use tax collections for the month of April were 1.975 million, approximately. This puts sales taxes for the year at 283,587, excuse me, or about 1.73 percent over our projected budget. And use tax collections were 168,741 over our projected budget, or approximately 13.7 percent.
Any questions, or chance?
I think those are half a cent, sales tax.
That's correct, yes.
So is that amount up, is that?
We're up to the margin. In fact, sales taxes were up almost 5 percent.
While I was asking, but?
For this particular month. Yes, sir, it does.
Does the budget number include that half cent?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So this is really above budget?
That's correct. We're above budget, yes.
Good. Is there any new business? Seeing none? Commissioners' comments?
All righty. It was a busy weekend, a wet busy weekend. I know that some folks talked about Red Bud earlier, but that event, well, as well as you could hope to, in a really wet, cold, nasty night, we moved it inside to the municipal auditorium, and that was a nice facility for that. We're very, very lucky to have that, appreciate use of that. Appreciate help of all the volunteers that came out. We had a number of organizations that brought people out, and let me tell you, you can't put on an event like that without lots of volunteers, and we're lucky to have them. So, thank you very much. Also, I want to thank the city and the city staff for the use of the building, and their volunteers that came up and helped out, but worked out good, and we really appreciate all the help. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to tell our assistant engineer we're still friends, okay?
He's now the engineer.
But he is, yes.
Oh, that's, sorry.
But he's still your friend.
My apologies. I knew that, it's just, it's my, you know, my age, I think, is catching up.
Don't let it go to your head, Mike.
I do appreciate the work and the information, and I appreciate knowing about the synchronization of the lights, and I've had people comment about the ones, especially that on Harrison and I-40, I assume that that includes those?
They're connected, they're just not synced yet.
I'm sorry?
They're connected, they're not synced yet.
Okay. But anyhow, there's been some comments about those not being synchronized, where you can go through and turn, and the traffic pile up, and stop the traffic off the interstate. So, if we have any influence on the, maybe on the state to take that over, maybe they'll not want, might not want the burden, but anyhow, it's helpful to keep that under control. I do appreciate your remarks, and thank you very much. And I'm probably as guilty as anybody about speeding down Kickapoo. It's, I try to watch it, but anyhow, I will watch it closer now, thank you.
Just glad to be here.
Darren's just glad to be here. Mark?
So we got lights fixed out on Worth Harrison, streetlights. So they're all back on between I-40 and MacArthur. Glad to see the deal with Spectre worked out. I'm kind of excited about that. Rodeo's coming up here in a couple months. That's about all I got.
I'd just like to share some stats with you, just a second, bear with me. I did some homework after our March 18 meeting on cell towers. And I used the point of reference of Kickapoo and 45th Street, a three-mile radius of that intersection. And we have 46 towers in that, in that area, from 32 feet to 200 feet. And so then Thursday, I decided to do some additional work, and I found out that there's 185 registered antenna towers in Shawnee. I think they're all over the place, but we just don't see them, because we're driving all the time. And another point I found out was, two of AT&amp;T's towers handle more data on a daily basis than any other tower in Oklahoma.
Interesting. Well, Mike, when I'm out there driving around at 4:00 a.m., there's hardly any traffic out there, so you're doing good. We are adjourned to the Shawnee Airport Authority.
I think that'd be more apt to be Darren than me, by the way.
Take that. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, would entertain a motion to adopt, moved by Commissioner Gillum, second by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven, aye. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
Seeing none, we are adjourned to the Shawnee Municipal Authority. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Rutherford.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Call a question. Motion carries seven, zero. Is there any new business?
No, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you for your opinion.